The time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, and will be posted on the school district website. The first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the April 9th, 2024 minutes. Does anybody have any questions regarding the minutes? Hearing no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th, 2024, meeting.
(Inaudible).
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, Ms. Napparado, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a few retiree announcements. I'm kind of going to take these out of order just a tiny bit. We have Patricia Koenichna from Park Ave Elementary. She is our speech and language pathologist. She is effective retiring on September 7th of 2024. Then we have a custodian from Bartlett High School who's been with the district for a very long time, Mr. Michael Mieske. His retirement will be effective in December of '24. And then, our recent retirement notice is sitting at the table here with us tonight. That is Ms. Lori Marazo. She has submitted her retirement effective June 30th, 2024. You know, we will celebrate her at a later date, but I did want to say that for the past 13 years, Lori has done an amazing job supporting the superintendent's office. When you talk about flexibility, adaptability, making parents feel welcome, and really seeing the district through change, Lori has seen five superintendents, I believe, have worked for, I think. If there was an interim, I was counting them.[161.01][161.01](Laughter) I was counting them. And everybody has a different way of doing things, a different process, and you wouldn't know it with the functionality of the superintendent's office. She truly has been a great support to me. I've had, I was on her hiring committee, and, you know, even making that change and working with her for the past, it's still a new position when you're coming in, even though you've worked here, it's a new position. And she has truly helped me acclimate to the office, and I rely heavily on her knowledge and just everything in the office. So, we will celebrate her at a later date. I'm sorry to see her go, but I wish her the very best. She has wonderful grandchildren I know she'll be spending time with, and you're going to be missed, Lori. So, thank you for everything you've done. You've done a lot. So, that's that for retirees. Which leads us to our transfers. We've had a few recent transfers. We had Stephanie Paletta, who was appointed the Park Ave School Nurse. As you know, Ms. Sarah Phillips resigned, so Stephanie will be moving over from the high school and filling that position. We had a position, Shari McCarthy. She was a Bartlett High School science teacher. She has transferred over to Webster Middle School, grade eight math position. And then, we're having a transfer with Lori's retirement in the work that she has done. She has spent the last year anticipating this date and really prepping Desiree in the office to move over to try and make a seamless transition. So, Ms. Desiree Moniz will be moving to Lori's position once she retires, and she will be the new executive assistant to the superintendent. So, I look forward to working with Desiree. She's got some big shoes to fill. So then, that'll leave an open position that we will review later on in the meeting. Are there any questions about personnel updates?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Lori.
I usually wonder when these, the transfers and the positions start.
So Lori will be retiring on June 30th, so the transfer will be starting on July 1st. So it's usually when the positions, Ms. McCarthy started after break on, when we came back from April break. And again, Desiree won't start, and Stephanie started also after April break.
Thank you.
And I can bring those dates to you in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, but just, Lori, congratulations, and I know how much you must be looking forward to your next chapter, and thank you for all you've done for the district. It's appreciated, and you'll be missed. (Laughter) I had to make sure I got that in.
Thank you. And then, moving on to instructional leadership. Last week, on April 10th and 11th, or, yeah, that was last week now, was it two weeks ago? Gosh, time flies when you're having fun. The district leadership team attended the K-Spring Conference. This conference is dedicated to teams who are working on high priority improvement initiatives. This work is supported by a company called WestEd, who has a high focus on supporting school systems through priority improvements. As a leadership team, we focused on our instructional priorities and the work that we've done to a date, and how that aligns with our current strategic plan, which expires next school year. We will be taking the current strategic plan, focusing on the work that we've completed and what's outstanding, and we will be looking at completing a new strategic plan during the next school year. Our hope would be to have it done by December, so we could bring it to the school committee for approval after the first of the year. Also, as I stated at our last meeting, we are currently working with the Center for School and District Partnership. CSDP is their acronym, everybody has an acronym, and they are doing an overview of the district. This process is being facilitated by the American Institutes for Research, who have been contracted by DESI. They're also known as AIR. The district previously had been reviewed by AIR many years ago, and what they've done, it's a similar process, but they've modified the work that they're doing. So, we had to complete an online survey as a team. They are reaching out individually to surveys with our school district leadership to discuss overall district and school improvements, and they've really adapted their process. What we were told by Catherine Bitter from AIR is that they're piloting the work that they're doing now, and we were one of 10 districts that were picked, so lucky us, to go through this process. They'll be, once they complete the interviews and the questionnaires, they'll file a report and meet with us and go over that report, is where we stand with our instructional and school district improvements. So, they'll be doing that. Also, in instructional news, the district, we are in our final year of our GLEAM grant. Our coaches, principals, and the director curriculum are still working with consultants on effective strategies in the classroom to assist on closing learning gaps. So, we will be doing a final walkthrough with them. Part of their process is they've been doing building walkthroughs, and we have a large walkthrough that we've consolidated with the GLEAM walkthrough and our SaaS partners to go through our classrooms in the district and take a look at our instructional priorities and our walkthrough tools as we go through. And then, on Tuesday and Wednesday of April break, the district hosted an Alice training for schools and businesses around the state. Because we were a hosting site, this made two seats available for free. So, myself and Officer Jim Young Jr. went to the training for two days to become certified Alice instructors. So, we will be able to support the other offices that lead our training at the beginning of the school, when we do our Alice training with staff. We've been talking about really expanding that and bringing it more, not just doing it with our staff, but doing it with our students as we move forward. Like you say, any prep is good prep that you do. When it comes, you hope emergencies never come, but when they do, it's better to be prepared and have a plan in place versus not knowing what to do. So that's something that we will be working on next year. I know, actually, Amy's here tonight, so I'm going to skip over the next one, because I'm sure she's going to be talking about your informational night for kindergarten? Do you have that on you? Yep, okay. And so, and just a shout out to Park Avenue on April 11th. I just wanted to say they had a wonderful art show that I was able to attend. They do so much work with the kids in the community, and the show was out of this world. And if you happened to go, you know what that meant. It was about little spaceships and out of the world, so it was pretty cool. But, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Lori.
I'm not going to single any one school out, but the web school, not all the school websites are being kept up to date.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
Because I've looked for information, and they've been way behind, way behind. And so, current things aren't on there.
Okay.
On the website.
Thank you, I will look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Millet. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Oh, and I did, can I just share one more thing that I thought of after? I had a grandparent come in to see me yesterday, who just wanted me to know something positive about our students here in Webster. She had told me that over the weekend, there was the Little League Parade that was happening in town. I was unaware of that. And the boys' baseball team, the coach got the kids together, and they went down to the field to support the Little Leaguers. And when they came in from the parade, they made a giant tunnel that the Little Leaguers could go under, and they were just thrilled and really excited. And then, they ended up volunteering their own time, working in the concession stand so the parents could watch their kids play on opening night. So, you know, she just thought they were all so polite. All the little kids really looked up to them, and they just thought it was the best thing in the world. And she just said, "I'm sure you don't hear all the good things that are happening, but you have some really amazing kids, and I just wanted to stop in and share that." So, I just wanted to share, because there are so many positive things happening in our school district with our students who represent us so proudly on a daily basis. So, I just wanted to give them a shout out and thank them, because this was totally volunteer. This was nothing they had to do. It was just something they did on their own time. So, a shout out to the baseball team, their coach, and the kids, and, you know, I couldn't thank that grandparent enough for coming in to share that with me. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. That was important and so nice to be shared by both the grandparent and by you tonight. So, very positive.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with the agenda, we have the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Contos.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm just going to be giving you some updates regarding the renovation project here at the high school. As you can tell, as you come across the property, there's lots of activity going on. First thing I'm really happy to report is the chairlift in the building has been finally, the installation has been completed, and it passed inspection. So, the elevator in Section C has been fully decommissioned, and as a result, we no longer have access to that section of the building. We did previously have up some polytunnels, so that people could still access the elevator, but that whole section of the building has been shut down now that we have the elevator up and running. We also conducted two training sessions on how to use this elevator. We did one over the school break, and we also did one at the start of this week, so that all of the administrators, the technology staff, as well as the custodians, knew how to operate that, as well as the school nurse, so as we assist students who need access to that lift, that they were well informed on how to use it. Activity still continues to move forward with utility coordination, a variety of things going on. Good news, the project trailers now are not running on a generator, and I'm sure that the neighbors are happy that they don't have to hear any humming anymore during the day. Continuing to move forward with the power supply for the school, and design reviews are underway relative to the gas lines. Regarding abatement, DLS has approved some additional abatement activities, so a number of classrooms on the second floor were abated beyond what I previously reported. And I should mention, as a result of the elevator being decommissioned, what we'll start seeing is we're going to start seeing those approvals come forward now for more abatement activities to happen. That polytunnel was really preventing the full abatement from moving forward, so getting that completed is really important for keeping this project schedule moving forward. There's been lots of activity occurring in the basement. The rough layout, the demo of all the ductwork has been completed, saw cutting for the elevator, putting up pure footings. And the next step, following this excavation that'll happen, will be the rough plumbing. Probably sharing a lot of details, technical details, that I'm getting familiar with as this project goes along and I sit in project meetings. Around the property, there were a lot of site work that has been done over the last couple of weeks. Drains were installed in the local central office parking lot, and you'll see that a portion of that parking lot received an asphalt binder. There will be another binder that'll be put down later this week into early next week around the construction parking lot, and as well as some of the site work that's been happening in that area. Some additional vegetation and tree work occurred over school break. There were some pruning that happened around the building. I don't know if you noticed, but at the front of Bartlett of the building, a lot of the trees and the branches were coming across onto the building and onto the roof. Those were pruned. Any trees that were really in poor health were taken down. It was not a significant number, it was very insignificant, as a matter of fact. And the next thing that's coming up is some work around the curbs on the campus that'll be prepped for. Also, in preparation for Section C, the actual kitchen is moving, and the cafeteria is moving into Section C. So, one of the things that has been completed is the permit application has been submitted to the Board of Health. While we're in this construction phase, we have been looking at a few design-related activities. There's been three areas that we've been focusing in on. One of them are bollards, and those are really safety. You probably have seen them if you go to Home Depot or supermarkets. Typically, they're large concrete blocks that prevent cars from going into buildings or from hitting pedestrians. So, we did some redesign on the bollards. The original design really planned for removable ones that had plates at the bottom, and we had some significant concerns about maintenance and damage to those plates as a result of plowing. Also, taking a look at the electric vehicle charging stations across the campus. So, it calls for 14 stations across the campus, so we are looking at whether or not those stations actually stay within one location in the teacher parking lot, or whether or not those are dispersed into other areas around the campus. And then, the last item that we're looking at is the access to the balcony in the auditorium. So, the original design called for a chairlift on some stairs after some consultation with the local building inspector. There's been some back and forth about whether or not a variance is needed on that, so we've been consulting with the state. So, those have been some of the design activities that we've been talking about. And then, lastly, we actually had a fire drill, or what was believed to be a fire drill. The fire alarms got triggered mid-month, resulting in a full evacuation of the building. What we discovered was there was an issue with a GFI in Section C, and what that was doing is that on that sensor was causing what they call a volt wave, which actually caused a surge in other detectors across the building. So, we did consult with American Alarm. They came on site, did some troubleshooting to diagnose that problem, and a resistor was installed on the panel to prevent that from happening in the future, as they addressed the actual GFI issue in that section as well. Let me pause there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. That was a lot of great information. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Yeah.
No other reports?
I think that's it for this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Good news is I have no issues to report in any of the other buildings.
That is good news. Okay, so, moving forward on the agenda, we have the principal report. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, so, starting with school events, we have had some school events that have happened since my last time here. On May 4th, April 4th, I take that back, we had our play, Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs. The advisors, teachers, Carrie Williams, Deb Castellani, Mike Michikay, and our music teacher, Jenna McDonald, were the advisors. There were 62 students in grades three and four as part of that performance, behind scenes and on stage. So, they did two shows on that day, and prior to that, they did rehearsals for all of the grade levels. So, all of the grade levels, K to four, were able to see the performance as well, which acted as dress rehearsals for the performers. We also had our art show. As Superintendent Perangeli mentioned, the theme was "Out of This World." It was open house style, well-attended, and it's always a nice night that people come through. Tomorrow, morning, we actually have our family engagement liaison, excuse me, is hosting a multilingual breakfast for our MLL families. For students who speak a language other than Spanish and Portuguese, we've already hosted breakfasts for our Spanish and Portuguese speakers. And because we have languages that are so spread out outside of those languages, families are invited, so they can be conversing in their home language and possibly meet other families as well who share a language. So, that will be tomorrow morning. And on May 2nd, we're having our Jump Into Kindergarten Night, which is an informational night about kindergarten for our families, our incoming families. We'll have some outside providers that come and set up a table. It runs from 6:00 to 8:00. From 6:00 to 6:30, we offer pizza, and then, from 6:30 to 8:00, they will, families will receive information, students will have a story, they'll do some classroom visits, and the highlight is the bus ride. Families and students can ride the bus around town for a little bit. And also, a Girls on the Run update. We do have Girls on the Run happening, so they have a practice run on May 4th at Webster Middle School. And then, on June 4th is the official run at Polar Park. So, that will be their spring run. I will be there, walking slash running, but it'll be good. Moving on to an MCAS update, we have completed our grades three and four ELA. The test went very smoothly, a credit to the preparation by the teachers in the IT department. I believe, at this time, we still have two final makeups, and then, we will be done. Moving on to math, which will be between May 13th and 16th. So, we only test in grades three and four, so unlike the middle school that has to test all their grades, so that is manageable. But, we did have, in grade three alone, 19 different groups to manage and juggle and find space and proctors for, so it's quite an orchestration. For our professional development, we did have a full-day PD on March 28th. Most of our classroom teachers participated in STEMScopes to increase our science instruction. STEMScopes is our current science curriculum. And also, iReady diagnostic tools. So, iReady is the testing that we give three times a year. Within that are a lot of resources, so as a result of their, out of their assessments, it provides information about what students need to grow their skills, where their current levels are, and what they can be doing to increase their levels. So, we learned more about the resources that we can use within iReady, based on the data we gather. And on April 5th, we had a half-day, and we continued our work around trauma-informed schools with the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative. We have also concluded a math pilot. We've been examining a new math program, K-26, our contract with iReady Math, Ready Math is our, as our programming is up. So, we were examining other programs. We started in about February. We explored three, invited three programs to come in and talk to us. After working with teachers, participating in that process, we narrowed it down to two, and we piloted both programs, K to six. So, across the middle school, we offered opportunities for teachers to observe the classrooms. We collected survey data from the teachers who were piloting it. We also made sure to have special education and MLL teachers involved in those classrooms to make sure we're meeting the needs of all our learners. And soon, you will be seeing a request for approval for a math program. The three that we explored were Ready Math, as it was our current program, Illustrious Mathematics, and Eureka Math Squared. So, the staff has chosen Eureka Math Squared, so we will be seeking an approval on that math program at the next meeting. And finally, I think you may have received a list of upcoming events. We're heading into our final season. I have put all of these into the data sheet to have them listed on the website. So, we have lots of field trips coming up. That's just where three and four will be going to Old Sturbridge Village. That is a Webster grant, a Webster First Grant, that they do Webster Days there. K is going to Southwicks, one to Davis Farmland, two goes to Buffenville, three goes to Slater's Museum, which is a walking field trip, and four, grade four, will be hiking Wachusett Mountain. And then, our concerts are also listed. We'll be doing two grades per day. It is, families come, we have it out on our peaceful playground outside, so there are rain dates. The May 17th will be K and one, May 31st, grades two and three, and June 12th will be grade four, and that will be in conjunction with a promotion celebration for our grade four students. And then, field days are spread out over three days. The kids go out one grade at a time for about two hours. The last day of preschool is June 7th, and they will be also scheduling field days and a pre-K graduation. We don't have that date yet. And that's it for me.
Thank you. That was a lot.
Any questions?
That sounds like some great activities that have happened, that are going to happen, and just a lot of work going on overall. Any questions or comments from the committee? No? All right. I think we might be able to get through the student update. Okay, all right. Mohamed, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So, I wanted to start with talking about the New York field trip that the art students went on. So, on April 5th, our students, Bartlett Art Students went on a all-day-long field trip to New York. We visited the Guggenheim Museum, Central Park, and the Met Museum. I loved the Met Museum, it was really fun when we went there. It was just an amazing experience. And to see all the history and all the art was really cool. And then, following after that was Spirit Week from April 8th, April 8th to 12th. On Monday, it was Crocs or Not. On Tuesday, it was Celebrity Day. On Wednesday, it was Rhyme Without a Reason. Thursday was Barbecue Dad vs. Soccer Mom, and then Friday was Country Club vs. Country. And then, last thing, I wanted to talk about Senior Scoop. You might be wondering what Senior Scoop is. So, a Senior Scoop is a great project that gives seniors with no plan after high school ideas on what to do after high school. So, it could be setting them up with jobs, or giving them ideas on jobs, or even internships. And today, the Senior Scoop, the Senior Scoop seniors, Senior Scoop seniors, went to Polar Park, where they, there was a job fair, a lot of jobs and opportunities for seniors to look at there, and they got a chance to talk to recruiters from those jobs, and it's just, those jobs are there to plant a seed for their future. Yeah. And that's my updates.
That's great. Thank you. What a great opportunity. What a great opportunity for our students to participate in that and in the wonderful trip to New York City.
And if I'm remembering correctly, I believe our seniors prepared resumes to bring with them to hand out as they were meeting people and businesses across to give them an opportunity to look for, for work.
That's a great life skill. Any questions or comments from the committee? Okay, hearing none. I think we can move into our public hearing session regarding the FY '25 budget.
Do we have to close or pause anything or just say that? No? Okay. Thought so. I think we had to pause this meeting and open a public. But you have to open a public? Yeah. So, which I think she just did, really? A motion to vote.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to enter into the public hearing for the FY '25 budget review.
So moved.
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So I will go through this quickly. This slide shows where we started our budget in January to where we ended up in March 26th. We started our first presentation to you was on January 9th. We presented a $27,766,806 budget, which represented a 709, I mean, a 7.09% increase over the previous year. We then reevaluated that budget in February 13th and reduced it to a 5.35% budget. And then on March 26th, 2024, we submitted a budget for recommendation, which represented a 3.21% budget, which totaled $26,761,578. How did we get to that number? It was basically what impacted our Chapter 70. So when we started the school year, as you know, in the past couple of years, we have really benefited from our Chapter 70 funds. And that was due to the inflation rate being capped at 4.5%. This year, we were hoping for another big increase with our budget. But they set the inflation rate at 1.35%, which resulted in 929, approximately $929,000 increase in Chapter 70 aid. As you know, all of the aid that we get from Chapter 70 and our local government aid go into a pot. From there, we take our shared cost out. Shared costs could be things like health insurance and retirement and things like that come out of that. And then whatever is remaining, we split 70% for the school and 30% for the town. That resulted in an increase of 800, let me go back to the beginning, an increase of So as we approached, knowing that we weren't going to sustain the current staff that we had with our increases, we took a look at how we approached any staff reduction, and these were the factors that we considered. We've considered our mission, what would be the impact of the programs, our enrollments. We looked at class size. We looked at the needs of our special ed students and our L students. We looked at our support services, and we looked at teacher ratios. On March 26th, 20, $26 million budget represented eliminating, I believe it was 16 positions, which impacted 10 staff. We eliminated our Park Ave academic interventionist, adjustment counselor, librarian, and administrative assistant, a social studies teacher, one L teacher, an instructional coach, para, and we removed any overlap in our retirement. And here are the position impacts. And since nobody is here, I don't know that the school committee has any questions on our public hearing budget. Again, we are always happy to answer any questions the public may have. They can reach either Lisa Kontos by email or by phone. They can call me by email, by phone, or reach me by email or pop in. I'm always happy to discuss any budget concerns or needs. We think, you know, this is a budget that we can live with. It's not, like, at any point, nobody likes any reductions in positions. We feel like, you know, all the positions that we had are necessary. But we are hopeful and look forward to what we can do with the budget for next year. Are there any questions? I hope I didn't go too fast.
No, no, like you said, we've already reviewed this. So do I close the public hearing? So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and return to our regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Can you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. So moving on in our agenda, we have old business next, but there is no old business to discuss, so we will move on to new business. And the first item under new business is the approval of the job description for the central registrar and administrative assistant to the superintendent. Do you want to speak about that?
Sure thing. In your packet, you should have an updated job description. As you know, we will be posting this position to replace Desiree, who will be moving over to the executive assistant. They did, she did review this, and we went through it in our office and updated it since the position has been in place for a couple of years and it's kind of evolved with an updated. So you should have that, and I am looking for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the job description of the central registrar and administrative assistant to the superintendent.
So moved.
Hearing a motion in a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an out-of-state field trip to, for the Worcester, I'm sorry, Webster Middle School Band and Chorus to Southfield, Connecticut for their annual festival. Did we want to have any additional information about?
This was just an update. They changed the location, so where they're going, so it required an out-of-state approval.
Okay, great. So I will entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the Webster Middle School Band and Chorus to Southfield, Connecticut for the annual festival.
So moved.
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the updates in the Park Ave Elementary School Student Handbook. Would you like to review those for us?
Sure. So what you have in your packet is a list of suggestion, suggested additions that came out of our tiered monitoring review that's coming up from the Office of Civil Rights. There were several omissions or missing pieces that were recommended to be added, such as inclusion of gender identity in some of our nondiscrimination statements, some updated information regarding suspensions and processes related to suspensions, including the new pieces on student discipline in terms of looking for alternative remedies before leading to suspension. Did you want me to go through page by page on these items? They were, they were recommendations that came from the reviews, the pre-assess, pre-reviews that we've done. So on, based on those recommendations, we made the updates.
Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the updates in the Park Ave Elementary School Student Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. So the next item, actually, the next three items are the first reading of some policy updates. Do we want to review one by one?
Yep.
All right. So the first update is to Policy AD, which is the mission statement. So this will be the first reading.
Correct. We do not currently have this in our policy manual, so it was updated with MASCE in 2022. So we will not have it.
Thank you. And the next one is Policy ADC, Tobacco Products on School Premises Prohibited.
Correct. So the policy that we had in place was original to our policy in 2003 and has since been updated with the MASCE policy in 2022. So this brings it up to date.
Very good. And the third one is the Policy AE, which is Commitment to Accomplishment.
Correct. And this is something that we currently do not have in our policy manual. And again, this was an update from the MASCE in 2022.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding these updated policies? All right. No motion needed at this time. That was just the first reading. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Review, Transfer, and Signing of Warrants, Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers.
And before we enter into that, can I just take a moment to recognize you and say thank you for your years here in Webster and your commitment to the school department and the school committee? You have brought so much knowledge to the table, your background in special education, you know, your kids attending school here. You have just brought so much knowledge and support to us here and guidance. And I can't thank you enough for all of your work here in Webster. I don't know if anybody?
Yeah, I'll jump in. How many years has it?
Seven.
Seven years. Okay. Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't remember because I've been here six. Thank you for just the support to all of us, to the students, the teachers, the town. You've brought so much grace and patience to the committee, so thank you, and we'll definitely miss you.
I really appreciate that, and I have really enjoyed being on this committee and, you know, being a part of all of these processes and getting to know so many people on, you know, a much greater level. And it, you guys are just amazing to work with. This is a fantastic collaborative committee and along with administration. You know, Webster has so many gifts. There is so much positive. And it's, I think it's nice that it's starting to come out, like you, we're in the Webster Times for many more celebrations now, which is really a great thing. And being here, you just hear about all of the great things and the great opportunities for the students. And I hope everybody has a good understanding of really what the district is able to provide and the dedicated staff. I mean, they're, they're just amazing, and they, you know, make this place run and run well. And I would just say for any parents that are listening, please consider joining the school committee. It's, I mean, you literally have a seat at the table, and, you know, your voice is heard, your opinions are heard, and it's, it's been a great experience, and, and I really enjoyed it. So thank you for making it great.
Thank you. And I just, Kelly had texted me, she was so sorry, she was so sad she was missing your last meeting. So before the meeting, she texted me and she said, please thank Kathy. I'm reading it. I told her I'm just going to read it because I'm not going to. She said, please thank Kathy for her service and dedication to the committee and the community. You sacrificed countless hours and shared your expertise for the betterment of the Webster Public School, and for that she is grateful. So we just wanted to say thank you. We have a little card. We have some flowers. And, and another thing that's not here tonight is that we've started recognizing our retirees this year. I think it's only appropriate that we start recognizing our school committee members. They are also given countless hours and volunteer hours. You guys don't get paid for this work. So I will also be creating a plaque for our school committee members for the time they've served. You will be the first one on that plaque. So once it comes in, we'll have you back to celebrate it. But.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything. Thank you. And you get to keep your nameplate. You can take that out and take it with you.
All right.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
Thank you. So we do have a need for an approval for our transfer request from the Webster Middle School Activity Savings Account to the checking account in the amount of $6,334.89. Any questions regarding that? I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer request from Webster Middle School Student Activity Savings Account to checking account in the amount of $6,334.89.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion in a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Lori, there's a motion and a second. Could you please poll the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Good evening, everyone.